Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Supervisor Gomez, can you hear us?
I can hear, this is Jerry, I can hear you.
You did?
Yeah.
Will we be able to amplify it at all?
So that's the matter so far.
Okay. David, try talking again.
I can't hear him.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Oh, barely, barely.
Okay. Barely or clearly?
Barely.
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 It's in the animal.
Wow, it took me forever to sign in, it kept telling me my password was wrong and my, my meeting ID was wrong, I had to do it about six times.
Well, let's try something else, Mr. Smith, can you hear us?
Yes, I certainly can.
And, and we can hear you better too, so.
Well, good.
All right.
He's to the, and Dave's on the Zoom call, so there's a telephone number on Zoom.
Can David join just on Zoom, maybe?
David, do you have your laptop there, could you join in by Zoom directly?
Well, I can try.
Let's try that, it might increase your volume, where it's just you're so, so quiet.
All right, give me a second.
Our hardworking engineer, how are you? Where? Oh, well, we here.
Introduce them to us.
Good morning. How are you, young man?
Good, you?
Good. You ready for the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
County holiday, by the way, don't forget.
I don't think any of us.
We may accidentally come in that day, I don't know.
Derek, they're different. I'm just putting on record now.
You guys still there?
I, this is Jerry, I'm, I'm here, but I don't see you guys anymore.
Jerry, you hear me loud and clear?
Uh, yes, I do. I just had no video.
Our video is muted, Mr. Smith, but we'll, when we get the meeting started here in a few minutes, we'll open that up as well.
Okay.
If you didn't see us.
Hey, Derek.
Yeah.
Hey Derek. He can hear me loud and clear, and I can hear him loud and clear, and I can hear you guys loud and clear. I can't sign into this, I'm on the email that you sent me on the link, and I can't get in, I can't get into the Zoom. Derek?
Well, David, this is Jerry, I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you loud and clear.
To see if we can get you on the speakerphone here in the, in the court, or the, the boardroom. Okay. Hey, David?
Go ahead.
David?
I, yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead and hang up real quick, we're gonna either have you call the office, or we will call you directly on the speakerphone.
Okay.
All right.
Is it all?
I killed a bastard.
I know, really does.
It says no mobile phone, but there's now, it doesn't.
We can see where the scene.
Especially song, I like just talk like that.
We're gonna try this one. I'd say.
Better, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the.
Well, I want to ask you something. I'm trying to do something.
Just a minute.
No, it's okay, I just can tell you.
I learned to lead us in the club.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, Chairman Gomez is on the line, on the phone. I'll need to run it while we're here. Welcome. All right, well, next agenda item is call to the public, do we have anybody in call to the public?
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I might. Derek Revere, citizen, but also county administrator. Uh, late last week, um, we had heard chattering all week that Representative Paul Gosar, Arizona representative, was going to introduce a bill to de-list the Mexican wolf from the endangered species act. That bill has been drafted, and, um, we were presented with the, with that information late last week after our agenda was, was posted. Um, I'm gonna present to the members of the board a copy of a resolution that, uh, I'd like us to consider at some point.
Thank you.
This is a resolish, resolution that would express the board's support for Representative Gosar's, uh, legislation. Um, because it's not on the agenda, we can't act today. Um, with your direction, we could place it either on the following agenda on Ja- July 22nd, or perhaps more, uh, relevant, we could find a date, um, next week, and have the board consider adopting this resolution as your formal statement of support. Um, so preferably be sometime earlier in, in the week, next week, if we can set it.
I, um, I'd like to recommend that we actually call a special meeting on Monday, if at all possible, that either 8:00 AM or. That works.
That works for me.
Could just be.
For me.
It works for, for Supervisor Gomez as well?
That work for you, David?
It works for me.
Okay, we'll address that, um, on the calendaring issue, and find a specific date and ti- or time, we have a date, and we'll get a nail down a specific time during the calendar later in the meeting, thank you.
No, I think, I think timing is of the essence as this gets, uh, presented, they, we need to know that, they need to know that we're in support, so. Okay, anybody else in calls the public? All right. Well, we'll close out a call to the public, we'll enter into agenda items two, the Public Health Service District. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenlee County Public Health Service District, and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following the consideration of the following items, the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we. Don't move my wording there.
Move to approve.
It will make the most. Make a motion that we move to approve the consent agenda as, uh.
I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion passes. Move into the, uh, item number three, the Flood Control District, the Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenlee County Flood Control District, and will reconvene at the Board of Supervisors following consideration of the following items, a consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for the Flood Control District as written.
I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right, we'll move into agenda item four, Arizona Alpine Trail Nonprofit Corporation, presentation regarding the progress of the, on the Arizona Alpine Trail.
And we are now convene, reconvened as the Board of Supervisors.
Ah, all right, thank you for, uh, filling that gap in.
And we have with us Jerry Smith, and Mr. Smith, are you the, the president, chairman, CEO, Large?
Uh, I'm president of the, uh, Arizona Alpine Trail, Inc., that's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation, um, that, uh, we formed in Arizona, uh, in nineteen, uh, 2021. Uh, so we're just coming up on about four years, uh, of, of being, uh, an entity and a corporation and, um, and, uh, working on this, uh, Arizona Alpine Trail.
Please proceed.
Okay. Um, I, I sent you, um, a slideshow which we use, um, for different, uh, presentations. And, um, you know, there's a lot of detail in that, and, and rather than go through that slideshow, uh, you know, I know you can all read, I can read, so, uh, we'll, uh, we'll just, uh, you know, if you have questions on that, I, I'd like to be able to have the time to answer those, uh, questions, but I just wanted to, um, let you know that this Arizona Alpine Trail is a really important, um, economic, uh, development and economic generator for this rural towns, uh, and counties in Arizona. It's, it's, uh, it's a big deal, because it's, um, it's the largest, longest, um, contiguous, motorized off-highway vehicle trail in the state. And it's, um, it's, it goes from Hannigan Meadow, which is, uh, uh, why we're here today, uh, and it goes, uh, all the way to Payson down, down the hill. Um, it drops about almost, uh, 5,000 feet, uh, in elevation, and it, uh, returns on a separate trail from Payson to Hannigan Meadow, so it's a, uh, it's all contained in the national forest, so we don't have to deal with, uh, state trust, we don't have to deal with BLM, we don't have to, uh, deal with, um, private ownership. Uh, the trail is, um, uh, all on national forest land, it's, we've gotten approval, uh, we're in compliance with what's called the Travel Management Plan for the Tonto Forest, the Coconino Forest, and the Apache Sitrees Forest, all of our trails are now in compliance with that, so there's, it, what we've done is just connect a whole bunch of, of, uh, forest trails to this, um, uh, to the Alpine Trail. And the interesting part about it is, none of it goes really through any towns. We go around most of the, the towns and communities, uh, but we have connectors to them, including Hannigan Meadow. So, um, this is a, a, a trail that we're going to start marketing. Uh, not this year, not this summer, probably because of the chance of forest fire, and, you know, we didn't want to open up the trail and then tell everybody, well, sorry, I know you, you, you came from New Jersey to ride the trail, but, uh, it's closed because of, uh, uh, the forest closed because of fire, so. You know, we didn't want to get a bunch of bad publicity and, and, uh, disappointed people by opening the trail and then having it closed, uh, closed by the forest. So, we're planning on probably, uh, opening it in the fall or, or, or next spring. Uh, but we're, we can now publish the trail and, and talk to everybody about it. And we're starting, um, our marketing effort. We have, have lots of support, uh, for marketing this trail from the state. Um, State Parks has invested about $400,000 into the trail to develop the master plan, uh, which is being completed by Logan Simpson of Tempe. And they are, uh, going to finish that by December, that's their, their, um, their targeted finish date. And that master plan will be maybe a couple hundred pages of, uh, of documentation on the uh, technical aspects of the, the trail, it, it talks about the length of each segment of the trail, and uh, there are like seventeen segments on one trail and thirteen segments on the other trail. And, uh, each segment, um, we, uh, we talk about the, uh, elevation change, the, the terrain, the difficulty of the trail, and a lot of definitions like that. And then each of the counties and each of the towns and communities will be highlighted in the master plan also with points of interest, uh, places to go, things to see. Um, and as we market this, uh, trail, what we'll do is, uh, probably have a, from each, uh, from any one location, we'll have one, one-day trips, two-day trips, three-day trips, four-day trips. Um, uh, maybe five-day trips, uh, you know, because this, this trail is, you know, 700 miles, if, if you average 10 miles an hour, that's 70, 70 hours of, uh, of riding. Um, and you can't do more than five or six hours a day, probably, so. It's, uh, it's, it's something where people are going to have to, um, um, visit the, uh, towns, communities, uh, stay overnight, uh, get, uh, fuel, uh, uh, groceries, maybe, uh, restaurants. Uh, and it's, um, we, we anticipate every day that the trail is open during the, the main season, uh, of the, of the trail, which is mostly the spring through fall. Uh, probably about, um, we'll generate maybe 90 to 100,000 dollars a day uh, along the trail, because, uh, the, the people that use this trail will spend about 300 dollars a day. We expect, uh, uh, compared to other trails that we know about, uh, there'll probably be about 300 to 400 people a day, uh, on the trail. So we're, we're looking at some nice economic benefits, and that's, that's the primary reason I'm talking to you and to all of towns, uh, getting support from them for marketing, is that, you, you'll get a return on that investment. Um, and we're, we're, you know, not asking a lot from the counties, uh, a thousand dollars, uh, is what we've asked. Um, some of the towns, we base the, what we ask, uh, for support, based on their population. So Shallow gives us 12,000, you know, Pine Top gives us 4,000, so on and so forth. So that's, uh, that's kind of, uh, what the trail is, it's, it's, um, it's a great, uh, opportunity for, for Arizona, I think, to get, uh, out of state and possibly, we're even thinking way in the future, out-of-country, uh, people to, um, to come and visit the trail. We, um, I, I'm, I'm involved with, uh, some legislation, uh, at the state level. Uh, Senate Bill, uh, 1517, uh, which, which I, uh, uh, submitted to, um, uh, Tim Dunn, Senator from, from Yuma, who's a personal friend of mine, and, uh, we, we put this bill forward because there was a little quirk in the law, which would not allow out-of-state OHV vehicles to get a, um, street legal designation. They would not, they would, they could come into the state, but they could only ride on the very back country trails and nothing that was, uh, improved or paved, so they couldn't really use the trail, they couldn't get to the towns, they couldn't legally. Uh, and this bill, um, was signed by the governor this year, so we're really, I'm really proud and happy that that bill got passed, because now out-of-state OHV, um, um, users can come into the state and they can become street legal. Uh, the quirk in the law was that they were not registered or licensed in the state, and, uh, we, we'll, uh, what we did was we provided for the, uh, uh, DOT to issue a temporary 30-day permit, uh, license registration uh, for out-of-state, uh, OHVs. And, uh, now that's going to help you especially, because you're right at the edge of the state. Uh, you're gonna get, uh, probably as many or more out-of-state people on the trail coming through Hannigan Meadow as, as in-state. Um, anyway, that's kind of an overview of the trail, we, uh, uh, we go through five counties, uh, Hila, uh, Coconino, Navajo, Apache, and Greenlee, and we go through, um, as I mentioned, three forests and fi- seven ranger districts, and so we're dealing with, we're juggling a lot of balls, uh, a- as we, as we work our way through this, uh, this trail. But it's coming together, and, uh, we're getting a, a lot of support from the Arizona Office of Tourism. Uh, we had a meeting with, uh, Josh Cottington and, um, and, uh, from the Arizona Office of Tourism. And there's a new du- there's a new division in the state called the, um, uh, Office of Outdoor Recreation. And that's headed up by, uh, Neil Larch, and he was, he came to our, 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 our meeting in, in Pine Top uh, on May 18th, and, uh, discussed all the ways that he wants to help promote this trail, uh, as well as the Arizona Office of Tourism wants to promote the trail. And we're working with, uh, Arizona Highways, uh, for a, uh, we've done one photo shoot with them, and we hope to do a, uh, an article. We have a really good photographer that, um, manages our, our, uh, all of our graphics, and, uh, he has had a lot of, um, of stuff in Arizona Highways, and he knows them, and they know him, and, and they, they think that, uh, maybe one of these days we'll do a, an Arizona Highways special on the trail, and we'll highlight, you know, all the counties, all the towns, and everybody, uh, in that. So we're, uh, we're working, uh, uh, that side of the, of the thing, and, and, um, uh, just really, uh, getting a lot of attention from the state and, uh, support for, for the trail, and, which is good, because our goal is, one of the things that we really want to do is, is when people use our forests and, and drive on them, we want to keep them on the trails they should be on, not the trails they think they want to try. Uh, that's not good for the environment, it's not good for the, the, the towns, because it, you know, they get in there and drive around the subdivisions, whatever, create dust and noise, nobody likes that. Uh, and what we're trying to do is keep people on the trails that they should be on, and that are approved for them to be on. Um, so that's, um, kind of, kind of in a, in a 15-minute nutshell, um, uh, the supplement to what you have, uh, in front of you as you're, on your documentation, so I'd be happy to answer um, questions that you might have about the trail.
Well, I, I appreciate that presentation, Mr. Smith. Um, obviously, the trail started in Hannigan Meadow, that's in my district, um, uh, in northern Greenlee County, and so, uh, we've been supportive of this in the past, and, and, uh, continue to support, support this. Um, I think you've outlined and answered the questions that I had, um, based on your letter to me and, and what you have, uh, you know, outlined, um, in this presentation, but does anybody else, any other people have a question for? Mr. Smith?
Sounds like a great.
Sounds like a great plan.
Go ahead, David.
Oh, I just said, sounds like a great plan.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, yeah, I, 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 by the way, uh, uh, my greetings to, to everybody, all the supervisors, Supervisor Campbell, uh, and, uh, Chairman Gomez, um, and, uh, Supervisor, is it Wain, Warren?
Warren, perfect, perfect.
Warren, okay, um, greetings to y'all, I, I appreciate that you run a good meeting, uh, I'm, uh, counselor at, uh, on Pine Top Lakeside, and so I, I understand how meetings are run, and, and you, uh, and I, and I appreciate a, a, a concisely, uh, run meeting. So, uh, well, anyway, but, but thank you for, um, uh, listening to me, and, and, uh, uh, appreciate your support, uh, we're, you're one of, uh, one of our five counties that we, that we, uh, we deal with, and uh, certainly, uh, we'll, we'll try to bring some, some good economic benefits to your county, uh, it, it's just a small piece of it that, that we actually, uh, are in, but I think we'll have a, a big impact. Um, I've been working with, uh, Larry Innes, um, at, uh, Hannigan Meadow, runs the lodge there, and, uh, he also has a lodge, uh, on the north rim, and we've been out there stayed at his lodge, and, and we ride, uh, our vehicles, our OHVs up there, both places. And, and one of the questions that I have for you, um, is, um, do you, uh, are you in, give per- permits or whatever for, for, uh, uh, fueling, get for gas, uh, if, uh, at, at Hannigan Meadow, they, Larry used to have a gas pump there, but it was just a gravity feed, and, um, we'd like to have a, a pay at the pump there, because, uh, that's kind of the end of the road, and, uh, it, it, it's a long way, uh, on, on our trail uh, to the next gas station, we can get it at Big Lake, and we can get it at Alpine. Um, but, um, you know, if you, if you're traveling, uh, more than 100 miles, um, you, you better start looking for a gas station. So what I wanted to do was find out, uh, if there was any, um, any, any help we could get from you, um, to, to get a, a pump for him. He's, uh, he's, he's got a tank, and he's got, um, He's uh, he's, he's got a tank and he's got um, he has had a, a, uh, you know, gasoline there. But right now, um, it was just a gravity feed and people were evidently helping themselves to the gas. So he'd like to get a uh, you know, something that'll take a credit card, twenty-four hour, seven um, gas pump. And I didn't know if you had to, if that's part of your purview of supervision or not.
Well, Mr. Smith, I'll uh, I'll defer to um, uh, people that know better than I, but I, I, my assumption is that it probably runs through ADQ for that permitting and um, but I'll, we'll follow up. And uh, one of our staff members will get back to you with, with uh, pointing you in the right direction on where uh, where we might be able to start that process, but.
Yeah, I thought that you'd probably have to approve it somehow, uh, you know, building permit department or something, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but we'll find out. But I appreciate the presentation, Mr. Smith, and I, I appreciate this project and the hard work that you've put into it. And I look forward to uh, uh, seeing, seeing what happens with it. So please keep us in loop as you start to roll out, uh, you know, any of your brochures or, or, or anything, you know, advertising for this project so that we can share in um, sharing that with our folks so that we can uh make this a successful project, so.
Well, good. Yeah, thank, um, um, thank you Supervisor. I, I, I assume Derek would be my point of contact. For when we get to the marketing and want to, want to highlight Greenlee and other, other things in, in our, in our literature. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I would start with him and he might, uh, he might defer that to some, somebody else in the staff, but he is your point person, so.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Now Derek, do you need just direction from us as far as the requests?
Um, yes, I, Mr. Smith, in his original uh, reach out letter to us, asked that the county consider a thousand dollar donation uh to the Arizona Alpine Trail. It's not agendized as such. But I think the board, that is within the, the county administrator's spending limit. If you simply give direction or we can put it on a subsequent agenda uh to consider either consent or on the regular agenda, whatever the board prefers.
Okay, well, I would, I would, I'd like to direct you to go ahead and donate that so we can continue to support this project.
Please do, yes. And, and Supervisor Gomez, are you comfortable with that as well?
I am.
Okay.
All right, good. Well, thank you.
The check will be in the mail, Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you very much. I'll send you a W nine.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No problem. All right, now we'll uh move on to Agenda Item Five, Austin Adams. Uh, Discussion, Action, Approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement Between Greenlee County Board of Supervisors and Marinsy School District for School Resource Officer.
All right, thank you Supervisor. Uh, not a ton to discuss on this. This has been, uh, the sheriff has been working on this. Um, I've worked with the schools uh to come up with this IGA. Um, he even had some fun spelling corrections this morning. Thanks, Taran. Thank you. Um, but, but we've, uh, we've worked that out. Uh, the school got a grant from United Way several years ago. That's included from the school's portion of this. Um, I've worked over with uh, with Ms. Morales on working through this uh IGA. I believe everybody's, the sheriff's looked over it, Jen's looked over it. I believe everybody's on the same page with it. Um, and that's what you have before you.
Good deal.
You guys have any questions on that?
I noticed that it'll be a nine month period, so a hundred eighty-four days. And then on the breaks in summer, then the individual will go back to working with the.
Absolutely. So, so how this was, how this was calculated, Will, so you know on this, we did this based on the school's usage. So would they kicked in, this is how many days we'll use the, the officer, and that's how we did the breakdown on cost. So they're paying kind of for their days they use and we pay for our days, if that makes sense.
That way we'll get full use out of that individual. Good.
Yes, yep.
Makes total sense. All right, well then, uh, any questions from you, Chairman Gomez?
Yes, I have a question uh for Austin. Uh, when, when is, do they currently have a school resource officer now? Do, do we have an agreement or, or has that did that go to the wayside back in the day and we haven't had one there?
That, the, back to, it went to the wayside back in the day. So this is new. We haven't had one in years, eight years.
Wow, wow, I didn't think it was that long. Okay. No, I think this is, this is a good deal.
I agree.
I have one more quick question. Are you looking to expand this into other schools in the county or?
Yeah, so we are working. I, I know the sheriff can speak more to this. We're also working with, with Duncan Schools to, to get an SRO down there as well.
Great.
All right, well, if that's all for the discussions, I entertain for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion um, to improve, to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Greenlee County Board of Supervisors and Marinsy District Schools uh for a resource officer.
And I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One step closer to getting there. That's great. All right, well, we'll move into the hardest working engineer in Greenlee County, what I hear. Uh, Reed Larson, County Engineer, action to award the bid for construction of concrete pad for the metal building to serve as the new public works facility.
Morning, gentlemen. To uh, borrow your phrase, we are a one step or a few steps closer to realization of that building. We've got massive pile of millings out there at the project site. There's a story behind that that I guess I'll share with you real quick, but we, we needed around a hundred truckloads of millings and the gentleman from FNF that was coordinating that went on vacation and auto trucking kept bringing millings. So, yeah, significantly more than a hundred truckloads of millings at the site. Um, but uh, Tri-County is starting just this morning to haul AB to the site as well. And then we have swap queued up to build that pad. So the request for you today is to approve uh, or to consider um, awarding a bid for construction of the concrete pad. As you'll see in your notes, we got only one bidder for this work. And I realize it's probably unsavory for the board to award when you did only get one bid. My hope is that you will move forward, however. Uh, primarily on the basis that although we only got one bid, we did get the bid that we wanted, meaning uh, we're familiar with this company. They constructed the pad for the adjacent shop and did a great job. And they have a reputation for doing good work in general. Um, I, I will confess to you that uh Chairman Gomez was in the room when we opened the bids and all three of us got a little bit of sticker shock at the amount. Um, so I went back and did some AI assisted research. And that, that told me that there was a range of prices per square foot for the concrete slab, a six inch reinforced concrete slab such as we're considering. And the per square foot price that this contractor submitted is comfortably within those two bookends. In fact, he's toward the low side of that. So I'm happy to answer any question that you might have.
I just said one que- who, who all did you, well, how many contractors did you send this bid out to?
So we just posted it to the county website and put it in the paper.
Okay, so it wasn't the question quoted, it was just the?
Yeah, we, we didn't go out and solicit
Okay.
uh, proposals from individual contractors.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, um, when we do that, there are at least two companies I'm aware of that scan all the local papers and then they, they let the contracting world know that there's a bid out there. So it's and, and depending on what's going on in the world of construction, sometimes we get a lot of interest, sometimes we get very little. Uh, but, but when we post there, it is cast out into the construction world to, to look at.
Well, I think it is good that we had somebody that we're familiar with that has done work for us before. Did, did they do the slab out at the fairgrounds as well?
Uh, they have done work at the fairgrounds, but I don't.
Yeah, I thought they did the dance floor, right?
They did.
Okay, okay. Well, and uh, the other question I have, I see that the proposal came in uh minus tax, so the total dollar amount does not include tax. How should we formulate the motion to include, you know, a do not exceed price, but, but also capture that tax though?
Since tax rates are set as percentages, there, there, there's no guesswork. It's just multiplication. You could simply say move to approve this work in the amount of the bid price plus uh include, I mean, plus taxes.
Okay. You got that, Will?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll see if I can get it.
All right. Well, then, any, any other questions? Chairman Gomez, do you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you, Reed.
Thank you, Reed. Well, I entertain for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we award the bid for construction of con- the concrete pad for the metal building to serve um as a new public's works facility to uh, see who this is. How do you pronounce that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, concrete LLC for the stated amount of a hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars plus um, tax.
That works for me. I second that.
I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right, gentlemen. One step closer.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the next agenda, item, item seven, Derek Rupier, County Administrator, action to enter into the into a intergovernmental agreement with Eastern Arizona College to provide college classes in Greenlee County.
So um, to Supervisor Gomez and Campbell, this is a longstanding contract we've had with Eastern Arizona. Uh, whereby they provide classes. Some of them are, are interest classes like crafts and stuff. Some are exercise classes. Uh, I've attached to the, the proposed contract, the classes that have already been provided in fiscal year twenty-five. Um, there were some changes of assignments in, in personality Eastern Arizona College. For some reason, this uh, IGA was not forwarded last year to Greenlee County. We've um, actually, we've had this longstanding agreement with them for many, many years. Um, we have budgeted for this in last year as well as the coming year. Um, the price was at thirty-five thousand. Um, I was contacted by Heston Welker. What, believe it their controller now. Um, but in event, asking that, that the price uh reflect, you know, current costs. So they raised from thirty-five to forty-five. That, that certainly seemed like a reasonable increase uh since the thirty-five had not changed in many, many, many years. Um, but unfortunately, the, the IGA was not presented until last week. We worked on it. We uh handled it out. I worked with their new uh contracts administrator, Nathan Smith, uh, on wording. We've had uh our county attorney review that wording. So my recommendation to board is that we adopt this IGA um, retroactive to fiscal year twenty-five. I think we have the budgeting funds. We've received an invoice for that year. Uh, they have already provided the services uh as indicated by the classes listed. We will then look forward on getting an IGA to you for fiscal year twenty-six. And we also need to review the, the, our appointed members of the advisory uh committee for the Eastern Arizona College uh courses and so forth. Uh, with that, I recommend that the board approve the IGA as presented.
All right, any uh, any questions?
No questions for me.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions?
Okay, no, I don't.
All right, sounds good.
So I'd like to make the motion that we um, enter into the intergovernmental agreement with Eastern Arizona College to provide uh college classes for Greenlee County. Um, is the amount?
I second that motion.
But do we, do we need to add?
Do we add that out?
No, because the amount is in the contract itself.
Okay. All right, well, this, the.
Believe we have a second too.
Yep, been, been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All right, well, we'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right. Well, then we'll move into Agenda Item Eight, County Administrator and Bianca Costiniana, uh, clerk of the board to talk about the uh county and state budget legislative issues and the calendar.
So um, obviously we've adopted our tentative budget uh for fiscal year twenty-six. Fortunately, um, the legislature has decided to quit. They quit early, like five days early before the, the, four days before the month ended. Um, there was a lot of uh hijinks and fireworks at the end of the session. Um, primarily intra-party fighting between the Republicans and the Republicans. Um, the Senate had negotiated with the Senate Democrats, Senate Republicans had negotiated with Senate Democrats, House Democrats and the governor. And had come to a, a bill that they could all kind of hold their nose, but support. House Republicans uh apparently never came to the negotiating table and then eventually they passed their version of a House priority bill. Um, and then when they received the Senate's bill, they um rejected that and sent back what they called an continuation bill and it was just continuing last year's budget. Uh, in what was somewhat of a, a, a fairly savvy political move or a legislative move. When the Senate received both those bills from the House, they passed them both and sent them to the governor, who literally in less than fifteen minutes, vetoed both of them. Um, which then brought the House to the realization that they are in divided government and had to pass a bill and they passed by and large the Senate version of the bill. More importantly, for Greenlee County, um, we have not yet identified any negative impacts from this budget on our budget. We have, on the contrary wise, however, there have been some uh positives. The, the sheriff's office, for example, has given a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We're still trying to figure out the exact application, but it, it appears to be in assistance of school interoperability and school safety. Um, it appears that our, our very modest contribution to the Arizona Department of Revenue will be reduced or eliminated. Um, and we've received, they've adjusted the reimbursal amount that uh they, the state pays for justices and peace. When the Superior Court Judge's salary goes up, justices and peace go up as well. It's a percentage of the Superior Court Judge's salary. So if, if you raise that, theirs will follow. Um, the state last year had not changed their contribution this year and this year's budget they did. And so on the net, uh, Greenlee County is slightly benefited by the state budget and, and like I say, we, CSA, ACO will all be going through that budget with a fine tooth comb. We will have a presentation in early August uh about those impacts. I will also meet with CSA staff and, and detail how, if at all, those um budget impacts hit Greenlee County. But right now, it, it appears to be a no harm, no foul budget as far as our finances are concerned. Um.
That's good news.
It is good news. We, we hold our breath until they go home.
Right, right.
And uh, and, and we have seen in, in the last two or three years, some literally last minute uh jockey. We frankly tried at one point when the House and the Senate were at odds with each other, we began contacting our, our Senate, uh Senator and, and representatives to see if we could maybe find some rogue dollars in the far neck of the woods. Um, I, in, in appreciation for Representative Diaz's candor, he told me that they had already everybody had submitted their asks by the time this came out, which led me to believe that the House was posturing. They'd already, they already knew how this was going to end up. And so, um, but nevertheless, yes, we are, we breathe a sigh of relief whenever the budget does not hit a square between the eyes. And this year, it's been pretty innocuous as far as we know. But, but that's about it on the, on the budget front, legislative front. Uh, again, if you have any ideas that you'd like uh to submit to CSA, um, for consideration as being a part of next year's county platform, now would be the time to formulate that. Uh, CSA does not require, but, but asks that those ideas be run through our own board first um, before they're presented to CSA. Uh, there have been occasionally um, a, a representative, a, a board supervisor who runs an idea all on their own, not having it passed at the border. In some cases, the rest of the board opposed the idea. Uh, those don't go anywhere very quickly. So if there are some ideas, then uh, then perhaps we should think about that. My suggestion is as well, we perhaps think about earlier what kind of uh asks we might want in a, if, if revenues uh exceed projections. Um, and, and so we can maybe either team with talent or identify the project would be helpful. So if you have ideas, please let me know and we'll develop them into a, a legislative uh type of an idea. CSA will, will fine tune it. And, and if it passes the CSA conference, we will then um promote that in next year's legislature.
All right, great. Well, it worked out for us in the last couple of years. So, you know, we used all our political. Well, it worked out for us in the last couple of years. So, you know, we used all our political clout, you know, on that other, so, well.
We'll see what next year brings.
Yes.
It'll be a full blown election year. It should be entertaining perhaps.
That's a good way to put it. All right, well then we'll, nothing else for legislative issues? Any on the calendar?
This week, offices are closed for Fourth of July, the Thursday and Friday. Next week is the annual E C O planning retreat on the eighth and ninth. N A P O Conference on the eleventh, starting on the eleventh through the fourteenth. Oh, we did, I'll do, I'll go ahead and put our next meeting on the seventh.
We just need to decide on a time for the special meeting to consider the resolution of all.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting eight or noon. If whatever works.
Either one is good with me.
Chairman Gomez, which, which time would be best for you, eight o'clock or noon on Monday?
Uh, what, whenever, whenever.
Let's go with noon. Let's stay with the.
Neither time would work for me.
Let's go like we did last time. Noon's good.
Noon works great.
Good, because if you guys can't decide, we have to make Bianca decide as your clerk, so.
I'm sure whatever decision she made with.
She would probably pick noon as well.
Yes.
Because majority of you did, yes.
Noon, noon it is.
And that would just be a call of eating.
Yeah, you sort of, we have your caller or zoom in if you need to.
So we set for, for noon, correct?
Yes, on the seventh, and you'll be sending us a Zoom invitation, correct?
Good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
No county managers, no C S A, the month of July. Our last board meeting in July will be on the twenty-second and we will be adopting our final budget. Marinsy School start on the twenty-third. Going into August, we have a board meeting on the fourth. And C S A will be presenting their annual report that day. That's at two. We have another board meeting on the, on August sixth, on Wednesday. That'll be eight A M. And we will set our tax rates. Duncan School will start, the rural forum is that day and it goes to the eighth. County Managers on the eighth. No C S A, no E C O. And our second board meeting in August will be the nineteenth. September, offices are closed Monday. Observance till Labor Day, our board meeting will fall on a Wednesday, that be eight A M. County Managers on the twelfth. Our second board meeting on the sixteenth. E C O and small counties on the seventeenth, C S A on the eighteenth. Our county fair starts on the eighteenth and it goes to the third, twenty-first. And that's all I have for September from this. Need to add.
All right. Well, just to shock any parents with kids, I mean, this month, July twenty-third, when Marinsy starts. And Duncan starts on August the sixth, so. Anyway, that's gonna be, gonna be good. All right, anything else for the calendar?
No, sir, Dave.
I have one.
Okay, good.
All right, we'll move into Agenda Item Nine, the Consent Agenda, and I understand that we're going to remove Agenda Item Nine E, is that correct?
Correct.
A great explanation would be helpful too, maybe.
Yeah, my apologies. So Agenda Item Nine E was put on there by mistake. It is for probation, so it just needs to be removed.
Just parliamentary inquiry thing. Um, do we need a motion to remove Item E prior to approving the consent agenda, or can we approve the consent agenda in one motion and removing minus Agenda Item E?
Both, both would profit.
I, I do think one works.
I think so would be good. The most efficient would be to approve the consent agenda. Without, except for Item E.
The exception of the.
We don't need to table it. We're just removing it, so. Okay. Well, there's any other questions? I just want to make a comment on the consent agenda. I'd see a lot of, you know, the planning and zoning appointments, and I appreciate all these citizens that are, that are stepping up to serve in those roles. It's a thankless job. But, you know, we've had several, several people move out and several people step up to be able to do that. And so I just wanted to say thank you for all those that are, that are stepping up to do that, but.
And to echo Mr. Campbell's comments, thank you very much for the work that the previous planning and zoning group has done also.
Yes, absolutely.
So to both groups, thank you very much.
All right, well.
Thank you for those comments.
Yep, all right, well, call for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written, with the exception of Item E that will be removed from the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right. We'll go into Agenda Item Ten Supervisor Reports. Mr. Chairman, anything to report?
I have nothing at this time.
This work. I have nothing at this time.
All right, and I won't do that this time, but we'll have plenty next meeting for all of us, I'm sure. Okay, great. Well, our next agenda item is adjournment. We are adjourned. Awesome, thank you, Campbell. Thank you, David.
David, you have a good day.